Call to order, the planning commission meeting for Thursday, January 20th, 2022. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brown, will you please go over?
Yes, Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Heikle.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Smolky.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here. Thank you. Our first order of business, first, I'd like to acknowledge that we've got four commissioners that have been reappointed for three more years. Commissioner Bradley, Commissioner Geisler, Commissioner Heikle, and myself. And I was reappointed Chair for another year. So, thank you, counsel. All right, our next first order of business is to adopt our agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Smolky. Any discussion, corrections, additions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the agenda's been adopted. Next, we have the approval of our minutes of our December meeting.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I move that we approve the minutes of the prior meeting.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Heikle. Any corrections or additions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the minutes are approved. Our first order of business is planning case 21-49, a site plan for a 10,600-square-foot retail building at 10524 Hanson Boulevard, the Dollar General. Mr. Brown.
All right, good evening, commissioners. You have seen this project in a different iteration before. Back in the fall, you considered this site plan. It was postponed a couple times while staff continued to work with the applicant on some outstanding site plan issues. The site, of course, is at the southwest corner of Coon Rapids Boulevard and Hanson Boulevard, currently vacant, owned by the adjacent Methodist Church, just under an acre in size. Dollar General is proposing just over a 10,000-square-foot store on the site. The overall site plan, the configuration of the site has not changed since you last saw this. Basically, the building kind of toward the west end of the site, the parking along the Hanson Boulevard frontage, loading area and dumpster enclosure on the south side. The site is accessed off of the Coon Rapids Boulevard service road at the south. Landscape plan, and I'll go into this in a little more detail in a minute, that was one of the things we worked with the applicant on. Previously, very little landscaping was shown. Now, the landscape plan does comply with the city's landscape standards, so they added quite a bit of landscaping. They're also proposing to retain the largely wooded area that's mostly in the Coon Rapids Boulevard right-of-way. The right-of-way is very wide at that location, so a fair amount of existing vegetation will remain in the vicinity of the site. Building elevations, again, a few changes. Generally, the building materials, primarily nichihaf fiber cement panel, that's the brown color, also some split-face block and brick accents, so they're meeting the requirements for brick or other masonry. The entrance of the building is kind of at the northeast corner, near the corner of, oriented toward the corner of Hanson and Coon Rapids Boulevard. Windows are proposed on both the north and east sides of the building. Another detail I'll go into a little bit, that's actually, the window requirement is the only area where the applicant is requesting flexibility from the standards. Otherwise, now, really, the site plan is in compliance with other standards, a few of them, though, with the conditions of approval. So, just providing a few updates on some of the outstanding issues from the previous, from the last time you considered this application. One of the issues was parking. There are 30 parking spaces shown as part of this site plan. The code would require a total of 44 parking spaces. However, there is a provision in the code that if an applicant can demonstrate that a smaller number of spaces would be sufficient for a particular use, and documentation is provided for that, the city can consider a lesser amount of parking. Since the last time you considered it, the applicant has provided, and it was included in your materials, an analysis of similar stores they have in similar, you know, more suburban or urban contexts as opposed to rural, showing what the parking demand was for that store. And it seems that this particular retail user, you know, doesn't generate a huge parking demand all at once. Overall, staff is comfortable with that reduction. It represents about one space per 350 square feet, which is a good amount for a small retail use. We know that, you know, a lot of times, larger-scale uses, it might be drawing a lot of traffic at particular times of year, might demand more parking. In this case, we're comfortable with the 30 spaces they're providing. Second, the applicant has made some changes to the curb cut. You might remember on the previous iteration, it was a very wide curb cut. They were planning on maneuvering delivery trucks in the street right-of-way, which is problematic. They've since modified that, indicated that they'll be using smaller trucks to service this store, so that the curb cut is a width that complies with city standards, and they can maneuver those trucks on-site. Two-story expression, another requirement in the River Rapids overlay district, something we worked pretty extensively with the applicant. They had previously just shown, well, one level of windows on the north and east sides that were primarily opaque spandrel glass. They are still proposing spandrel glass for most of the windows. However, they have added a series of clear-story windows on both elevations that will be transparent windows. The spandrel windows will be constructed in a manner that they could be replaced with clear windows down the road if a different tenant is in there, or if the configuration of the store is there. There is some clear glass around the entrance, but most of the other first-level windows along the Coon Rapids Boulevard and Hanson elevations is still spandrel. I'll go into this in a minute, but nonetheless, staff is generally comfortable with the new arrangement. On focal elements, the applicant did add some aluminum awnings around the entrance. Staff feels, in combination with the raised facades they're proposing along those north and east elevations, we feel they pretty much meet that requirement. Same with the canopy requirement, those awnings are generally sufficient. The trash enclosure is another area where they made some changes. They previously proposed a wood enclosure that has since been replaced with a masonry enclosure that will use the same CMUs that are on the building. That glass transparency, as I was just touching on, staff is comfortable with recommending in favor of design flexibility on that standard, just because with the addition of those clear-story windows, with the construction technique used on those spandrel windows, that generally is going to meet the requirement. Overall, over 60% of the width of the primary facade is comprised of windows. It's just that not all of them are clear. Another reason staff is comfortable with that is just because the right-of-way of Coon Rapids Boulevard is quite wide there. As I mentioned, there are trees in the right-of-way that really conceal views of much of that facade, and because the building is set back so far from the sidewalk, it's maybe not as critical in that particular context to have clear glass across the whole facade. Related to street furniture, we did add a condition, a recommended condition of approval on that topic, recommending that the applicant add a bicycle rack. Overall, we feel for this smaller-scale use, simply adding a bicycle rack would meet that street furniture requirement. On landscaping, as I mentioned before, we're pretty good there. On lighting, the applicant has provided some additional details, so we're okay there. On the sidewalk connection, that was another area where we continued to work with the applicant, and we have a condition of approval related to that. In the original materials you provided, they're showing a sidewalk that goes out to the frontage road, which we don't particularly like because there is currently no public sidewalk on that road, and it's not really in our sidewalk plan to have one there. So, we prefer that the pedestrian access to the site connects to an existing public sidewalk, either on Hanson or Coon Rapids Boulevard. And in a min, I'll go into a little more detail on what they are proposing. The commission can certainly weigh in on that, but we do still recommend that as a condition of approval. And then, the final condition of approval relates to tree preservation. Overall, we're comfortable with what they're proposing. They're not proposing to really disturb the vegetation in the Coon Rapids Boulevard right-of-way. However, if anything during construction warrants, that we are simply asking that they provide a tree preservation plan, provide good information on what trees are being disturbed, and just getting approval from the city forester on that. On that sidewalk issue, you can see on the screen here, the original site plan had the sidewalk connection to the south, to the frontage road. What they are proposing now is to extend a sidewalk along the north side of the parking lot out to the Hanson Boulevard public sidewalk. From staff's standpoint, as I said, we are pretty insistent on having a sidewalk connection to the public sidewalk. We don't necessarily have strong feelings whether it goes to Coon Rapids Boulevard or to Hanson Boulevard. We feel that either of those provide pretty direct access to the door from the sidewalks people might be walking on. So, that said, we are recommending approval of the site plan. There are a handful of conditions there that are outlined in your staff report related to those items that I covered, also recommending favorably for the design flexibility for the glass requirement. I am happy to answer any questions. I believe someone is here on behalf of the applicant. They can answer any questions that I might not be able to.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Brown at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Brown, with respect to the parking, was the applicant cited other sites developed, but is it based on that the store just doesn't have high peaks and it's more consistent? Or is it just low volume is kind of their explanation?
I might ask them to explain in a little more detail. My sense is it is some of both, that they just don't have, you know, it's not a business that attracts a lot of people at a particular, at any one given time, that it's more consistent. But also, it's a business that generally, you know, isn't a really high-volume type of retail business.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown at this time? All right, petitioner, I'd like to make a presentation or make some comments. Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. Okay, then I guess.
I don't really have anything to add unless there's questions.
Okay. All right, then we will, we have a public hearing opened, and it's been continued, so at this time, I will reopen the public hearing in planning case 21-49, the site plan for a 10,600-square-foot retail building at 10524 Hanson Boulevard, the Dollar General. Anyone present wish to speak at the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, nobody on Zoom.
Thank you. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Limit comments to the key commission. I have a question for the petitioner. If you could come to the microphone, please. And just for the record, state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Sam DeLeo, D-E-L-E-O. My address is 11 13th Avenue, excuse me, 13 11th Avenue North, St. Cloud, 56303.
All right, my question for you would be, how many employees do you plan on having running this facility?
There are typically no less than two people on staff at any one time. I assume that depends on how busy the store is as to how many they would hire. Typically, it's between two to four in the building at one time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Can I ask, are you open seven days a week, or will this?
Yes.
Seven days a week?
Yes.
Evening hours?
Typically, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. are the pretty standard hours for their DG stores.
Okay, I wasn't here for the original meeting last fall, but it seems to me that the parking norms are kind of being met. I kind of looked at that, and it seems to be sufficient, even if it doesn't meet the 44 that's required by code. You can see where it could easily be accommodated, so.
Yeah, I've done, over the years, close to 30 of these in Minnesota for them, and parking has come up as a variance item quite, I won't say quite often, but more than anything else. I can be honest and tell you that, because parking requirements are all over the board for different communities. And I've, we've always been awarded our variances, or had been allowed to have 30 stalls. And I, I'm a land surveyor by profession, and I go back to these stores. I work in the communities that they're in, because they commonly are built in the communities I work in. And I do notice that they don't have peak hours. I mean, that's what I'm told by Overland and Dollar General. There's really not like a peak time, it's just a constant flow. I mean, there'll be some quieter times, but it's not like 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning, or 5:00. There's a big rash of people coming, and the parking lots fill up. There just seems like there's always either two or three, or seven or eight cars in a parking lot, and that's really about it. It's just a very constant flow. And like I say, I've never seen a problem with having 30 stalls. It's always been more than sufficient.
And just out of curiosity, do you see a lot of use of the bike rack?
I think that depends on the community and where it's placed. I would say that's a very good suggestion in this spot, just being that it's close to residential development, that I could see people biking, especially, I mean, you're in a metro area here, it's a very bike-friendly community, people biking down rather than the driving, so I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We may have further questions.
Very well, thank you.
All right, Commissioner, thoughts, comments? I'm a little perplexed, concerned as to whether it really meets the definition of the ordinance requirement for the two-story expression. I don't know, Mr. Brown, is there anything more that you could add to that?
You know, there is certainly an element of subjectivity on that. Overall, staff feels like those clear-story windows, having that second, it does kind of give the appearance of a taller building or a second story. So, that's why staff was comfortable with that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
I also have that highlighted on my notes here. Wondering if it sets a precedent, or somewhere down the road, if another business or somebody builds, if they say, well, it was allowed here, therefore, it should be allowed here.
You know, I guess I wouldn't be too concerned about that. Obviously, site plans, you know, it kind of depends on what is appropriate for the context, and, you know, a different site could just have different site conditions, so a different solution to that may be appropriate. I would say, too, you know, if the commission has other suggestions, or would like to add a condition, that the applicant continue to work with staff on meeting that requirement, we can certainly figure out ways. And certainly, if you did that, we'd entertain suggestions on just design options or ideas that we might incorporate.
Commissioner Geisler. So, I hear those concerns. I still look at this and go, this is a 23-foot-tall building. It's very clearly two stories tall. I would agree that maybe this isn't as clearly as two-story as we would like to think, but there are other buildings down the Boulevard that are designed to this extent of clearly two stories. It's not a row building, it's not a very staid, there's, we've got some levels of differentiation on the key corners. We've got two layers of windows going in here. I'm actually more curious around the spandrel glazing and being comfortable with opaque windows as the design flexibility, rather than the two-story expression. I do think that they have done a good effort to meet the requirement, and I think staff's assessment is reasonable. That's where I'm more hung up on the design flexibility of, that's more of like a look and feel of going down the Boulevard, is that, you know, we see opaque glass and that everyone else is clear. That's the question of more where I'm feeling, design, is that appropriate? Just for the sake of conversation.
That was a thought that was in my mind as well. I'm not sure that there's another location where we've allowed that to be used.
Mr. Chair, we have. The self-storage facility, one of the self-storage facilities, recently in the last three years, we did allow spandrel glass. The one next to the Holiday Station store near Foley?
Foley and?
Yeah. That had spandrel glass on, I think, two, if not three, of the stories above the main level.
But that location isn't in a area that has a glass requirement, per se?
No, not necessarily. I mean, it may not be, it may not be equivocal in that sense, but it was definitely an issue that we brought up to, I guess, create the look of a more of an office-type building. So, spandrel glass was utilized in that instance. I mean, one possibility is to ask the applicant why, I guess, they can't construct normal clear glass. I believe it has to do with sort of, you're going to see kind of the interior, backside of a shelf, that sort of thing, but maybe they could address why it's important, why they can't meet that particular standard.
I would say you hit the nail on the head, as far as looking at the backs of shelves and things like that in a store. It's not a very big store, so when you do go in these stores, I mean, they have shelves on typically on the exterior walls, or some of them, that you're not going to want to look at the back of those while you're driving by the building. So, that would be the primary reason. That's why I think they went with the transparent up above, because there's nothing there, and that still will direct sunlight into the building, and it'll have some visual appreciation to it. But that would be why the opaque glass would be on the places that they have it, because it facilitates the layout of the store the way they need it to function inside.
Your stores don't take advantage of window advertising at all?
Not very much, no. I guess I haven't ever seen anything as far as window advertising. I mean, I don't know. They may have something on the entryway posted inside, but the ones that I've seen, they keep them pretty clean-looking, and I guess pleasant to look at would be the idea.
Commissioner Bradley. I think, Mr. Brown, in the initial presentation for the city, indicated that because of the sightlines with the tour vegetation and the way the building's oriented, that kind of mitigated the glass requirement as far as the city was concerned, and it would probably also mitigate any benefit to window advertising at that level.
Commissioner Smolky.
If I can ask a question regarding the parking for a second. So, assuming in the future, thinking ahead, right? So, a new business comes in, so maybe the parking allotment that's being proposed here works for this store, but are we handicapping or doing something that is going to impose something on a future occupant of the building?
Overall, staff is comfortable with that level of parking. As I said, one space per 350 square feet, you know, that's actually in line with what we would require for a lot of office uses, for a lot of other uses. Maybe it wouldn't work for every single retail use, however, for a smaller building like this, it's unlikely it's going to attract a retail user that really demands a lot of parking. So, we weren't overly concerned that it's going to, you know, really limit long-term if this particular tenant goes away, really limit long-term sustainability of that building.
Do you mind if I ask a follow-up? Is, so, how did you guys come to the getting comfortable with the 30, though, especially with such a large variance to the 43? And again, thinking in future, a different tenant, you know, were there any concerns talked about?
You know, we did rely a fair amount on the information the applicant provided. I would say that this particular retail user is similar to some other smaller-scale retail users, in that they don't necessarily have a large peak demand. It isn't necessarily a type of place that people go to every day on their way home from work, or at a particular time. So, that certainly was a big factor in our decision. Also, just thinking more broadly about, you know, our retail parking requirement is one space per 250 square feet. That is somewhat common. There are plenty of cities that are similar in context to ours that would, you know, require a little bit less parking. So, that one space per 350 is kind of within the range of what is acceptable for retail in general in this sort of context. So, we weren't overly concerned that we're under-parking the site if a different tenant came in there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Brown, do we need to make a condition on here about a separate sign approval? That's typically one of our standard conditions. I, just as a.
Yeah, that's certainly fair, just to close the loop on that.
Okay.
Certainly would. Certainly would be fine with that, yeah.
Things that we always see. That's just the question. Thank you.
Someone want to suggest a wording for that condition?
What's standard? There is a standard, I know.
It's probably just easiest to say, any signage comply with city code.
And requires separate permit?
If they want, some signs are permitted, but some signs require permits, and it depends on what they're seeking.
Which is covered under the code. Perfect, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I'm just wondering if somebody, somebody can briefly explain the tree preservation plan. What does that entail or how?
Yeah, what, what we would ask, and again, I believe it is unlikely because the applicant has made clear they are not intending to disturb that wooded area to any large extent. What we would simply ask for, if, if they were going to disturb that area, we would simply request an inventory of the trees that are there and an indication of what they're proposing to remove, what they're proposing to retain, and certainly I think we would just be sensitive to any trees that are in good shape, that are retained to the extent possible depending on what they're doing.
Personally, my thoughts are between the spandrel glass and the parking issues, both requiring flexibility, I'm not sure that I can agree with both of those. And I still haven't been convinced otherwise.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Since I brought up the, the parking, I think I'm, I'm okay with it based on the, you know, the assessment that the staff did considering to the use for the building and so forth. I think it will work. I am concerned about future use, but then I always try to balance in the fact of where we're going with regarding, you know, with commerce rate and the fact that there's so much online shopping these days that, you know, who knows what the demand will be for this site in the future. So in, in that respect, it's like, I appreciate that they came back. They did the homework to provide us with staffs that at least support the fact that the parking spaces that are, are being requested, that it will, it will not cause any, any ill effect for, you know, customers or, you know, for vehicles, et cetera, that do use the space. So I'm okay with the parking. The windows as well, I think, you know, I actually kind of appreciate, you know, when somebody asked the question about, well, do you use signage, you know, in your windows? I can't remember who that was, but it's kind of like nice to know that it's like, it's not going to be cluttered up potentially with lots of signage and so forth. And this, you know, their efforts to have the, this type of glass to kind of hide what they perceive to be maybe less desirable appearance is also not bad in my mind. So I feel like I can, I can get past both of those and I would, I would recommend approval.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I would concur with that around the parking. You know, I think we have had a lot of discussion around parking in a lot of places for a lot of reasons, some of them good, where we've noticed that, yeah, maybe we are a little underparked. I think there's a lot of places where we have found that we are way overparked. And I would much rather see more grass and less asphalt if we can on some sites where it's reasonable and where it's supported, where the applicant's done the work in here. So I think I'm comfortable with this parking allotment for this specific use. And, and looking at the landscape plan, it actually does show a little bit of the interior of the building. It would appear that also part of that facing side, the privacy of those windows would be also based on what's on the inside of those buildings. It appears to be maybe a bathroom or two and an office. And there's other reasons, I think, that where we consider what we did down by the new clinic that we're bidding out where they wanted to have some privacy glass because of what was on the interior of the building being potentially exam rooms or bathrooms or things like that, where that's totally reasonable and frankly, good. And I would rather see a glass structure and view that looks consistent rather than just a block of wall where there's nothing because we needed some privacy on the inside of the building. So those, those two things, I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with. You know, I do wish we had a little more interest in the architectural side of it, but I think it meets what we need, and that's more of a wish than a need and a want. So I, overall, I'm okay with where we are with this plan. Long-term, you know, trees get old, trees mature, trees have to be managed. So I do have, I'm not as comfortable with relying on mature trees in the, in the right-of-way as being the reason why it's okay, because ultimately, that's not part of the landscaping plan. It has to be ultimately maintained at the end, you know, and mature trees do go away at some point over time. So I, I don't feel that that's as much of a mitigating factor, in my opinion, for why this is okay. I feel like it's okay based on what we're seeing right here for the reasons that the applicant has presented.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I agree with a lot of what's been said by Commissioners Schmalki and Geisler. And I, I will say about those elevated windows, the clear ones that bring in sunlight to the building, and just the way, they're on two sides of the building, the north elevation that mostly faces Coon Rapids Boulevard and then more so on the east elevation that faces Hanson. And I think the, just the orientation of the building on the, on the lot will give that impression. That's what you're going to see, those two facets of the building. So I think that can give that second, that sense of elevation of a two-story building, quote, unquote. And the same goes with the windows that we're going to see mostly from those two angles. And the reasons given and the thinking behind that, I concur with. So I would be inclined to support this application.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
I'll make a motion. In planning case 21-49, I would, I'll make the motion to approve the site plan with the conditions of site in our packet, and then also with the addition of condition number seven, which should read, any signage must be compliant with city code.
Second. And then do we need a separate motion for the design flexibility?
I was just going to answer that.
Yes, I would, I would recommend you made a motion just to close the loop on the design flexibility.
Could it be included all in the one motion, or do you want separate motions?
Separate.
Pardon me?
Separate.
Separate. One is final today, another is not.
All right. All right, we have the motion to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries six to one with Chairman Schwartz opposed. And for the design flexibility?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
In planning case 21-49, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the design flexibility for less than 60% glass on the primary building facade that is transparent to a distance of four feet into the building. Finding that the modification is necessary to respond to site conditions will result in better integration of uses or additional park, public amenities, and will further the intent of the River Rapids overlay district.
Second. Motion by Schmalki, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries six to one. Chairman Schwartz opposed. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Good luck. All right, our next case.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Just to clarify that the design flexibility is a recommendation on our part and the site plan.
That's, that's right. The recommendation, the planning commission recommended that and that will be heard by the city council at the February 2nd meeting. Thank you. All right, our next case is planning case 21-38, a site plan at 3525, 3531 Coon Rapids Boulevard and 34XX 115th Lane, U-Haul company of northern Minnesota. Mr. Brown.
Yes. So this, as with the previous case, this is one you saw before, I believe in November of this year, U-Haul is proposing a, a new construction building on Coon Rapids Boulevard adjacent to its current site. This is the former Pedersen Floral Greenhouse that has sat vacant for a number of years. You can see the aerial photo there on the screen. This item had been continued to this meeting. Again, at the previous meeting, there were some outstanding issues. Staff has continued to work with the applicant on it. The size of the building, the overall site layout has not really changed since, since you saw it last. You might remember that when this last came before the planning commission, the use was, the, the initial application was for an indoor self-storage facility, and the applicant made a second related application for a conditional use permit for an indoor self-storage facility. Staff was just, based on the way the building was proposed to be operated, staff had just not been comfortable calling it a self-storage facility because, well, it is part of U-Haul's campus and they have a self-storage facility on the adjacent lot. This facility is proposed to be used to store, basically storage containers that would be delivered to and from people's homes or other locations where they can put their items in that, and then it is delivered back here for storage. Customers can access those containers. They would need to be retrieved. They're not all accessible all the time. So staff felt it had a lot of characteristics of more of a warehouse use rather than self-storage. So we've called it kind of, in this staff report, called it kind of a hybrid use, as some elements of a warehouse, some elements of a self-storage facility. So we are now treating it as a, as, as a request for use flexibility for that warehouse component. So now the application is simply a site plan with a request for use flexibility. With that, we continue to work with the applicant on other site plan issues. So now the request for use flexibility is the only request for flexibility. There are no requests for design or dimensional flexibility as part of this application. So the site plan now really complies with, with all of those standards. So you can see here again, and this was discussed a couple of months back, about a 17,000-square-foot building, nine parking spaces, I believe it is, accessed using an existing curb cut on Coon Rapids Boulevard, a loading dock toward the rear of the building, stormwater detention would occur at the north end of that site along 115th there. So that configuration generally has, has stayed the same. Staff has worked with the applicant on landscaping. It's actually kind of a unique site in that there are some very significant city utility easements. There is a major sanitary sewer line going under the site at the west edge. You can see on the graphic on the left, those red highlighted areas represent where those large utility easements are. Because of the utilities underneath those, it is not possible to plant trees there. So those areas were removed from, you know, the calculations to, for, for tree requirements. However, they were left in for shrub requirements. So the landscape plan, the current iteration, you can see on the right there, includes a fair amount of landscaping. Staff feels it complies with the requirements. There are good buffers from the, or for the residential uses to the north and west. The applicant indicated they planted some trees along that north property line within the last year or so that are contributing to that. A fair amount of landscaping along the Coon Rapids Boulevard frontage as well as around the stormwater pond. Building elevations, you can see here, again, just some minor modifications. We worked with them. That turquoise-colored canopy around the entrance has been deepened a little bit, so it provides more of a focal element. That was one concern previously, so staff believes that's really been resolved. The frontage does really comply with the glass requirement with two-story expression. Obviously, this is a taller building. In terms of materials, the primary material is an architectural metal panel with some CMU accents. Again, generally high-quality materials, complies with the brick or masonry requirement. You can see the side and rear elevations are a little more blank, although there isn't really a window requirement on those. We're pleased though, the loading dock is pretty well concealed from public view being on the, at the rear of the site. And here's a perspective drawing that highlights some of the elements. You can see, again, landscaping in front, parking on the east side of the building, and the loading would not be visible from the public right-of-way. So on that use flexibility for, for the warehouse or hybrid use, here are the findings you need to make. Staff feels overall, well, you would not necessarily need to make every single one of those findings. Staff did provide support in the staff report for really all four of those. So the first one relates to unique site conditions on the development site. Obviously, in this case, this parcel is adjacent to U-Haul's existing facility. They'd be a very logical buyer. The fact that the functions that would occur in this building are really integral to the functions they have on the adjacent property, which include vehicle rental and self-storage, really provides kind of a campus for them. While we may not be supportive of this use as a standalone use elsewhere along this corridor, because it is one component of U-Haul's broader facility, we're, we're more comfortable with that. I would also say, obviously, the existing condition of that site is kind of an eyesore. The existing greenhouses have been in very poor condition, and redevelopment of that site really meets a lot of our, our goals. The second finding relates to gain efficiencies that might include integration of uses, public amenities, reduction of environmental impact. I guess in my previous comments, I kind of touched on the integration of uses, but also, you know, for the environmental impact finding, this site plan provides onsite stormwater management for a site that doesn't provide any of that currently, brings the site up to current landscaping and other site plan standards. In terms of public amenities, you know, providing that consistent building edge along Coon Rapids Boulevard just makes, I think, for a more pleasant corridor. Third, related to site amenities and buffers. Similarly, there are adjacent residential uses. You heard from some of the neighbors at the previous meeting, it seemed that they, they were generally comfortable with it, and this site does provide buffers in the form of landscaping and compliance with, with, with the city's standards. And then finally, significantly advancing the intent of the section and not detracting from Port District uses. You know, this, this parcel is located outside of the Port District by quite a ways, so it shouldn't have any impact there. But again, advancing our redevelopment goals, providing a site plan that meets all, all of the River Rapids overlay standards. I think we can argue that it's, it's really advancing the intent of, of those zoning districts. So I can answer any questions. I believe we have a couple of representatives from the applicant, both in person and via Zoom, and they can answer additional questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Brown?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I will just make a comment that I appreciate the, the efforts that city staff has made along with the applicant to address the things that came up before a couple of times that we looked at this site. And it seems to me that the use flexibility is a much better fit here than the conditional use permit. So again, just my thanks to all of you who had to work through these details. We see the finished product, but you, you do the dirty work. So thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Brown, with respect to the comments about this being more of a campus, you know, I, I do find it interesting that there is no drive connection between these two sites without getting on the major Boulevard. Was that a specific thought, request, is it, was it missed? Like, what's the idea here?
I believe, and I, I might ask the applicant to respond to that in a little more detail, but it's my understanding that, well, you know, they are all, all integral functions to U-Haul's operation, the usage and the traffic oriented toward this facility is really just kind of in and out of this facility, and it's not people who are also renting And it's not people who are also renting a truck or have items stored in the adjacent self-storage facility. I think that's the main reason for not necessarily prioritizing an internal connection.
Further questions for the applicant, then? Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Higley.
Does all of the business get conducted then from the existing buildings? There'd be no office or whatever in the new building? Everything is done from the other building?
I might ask, again, that'd probably be a good question for the applicant, just some of those internal operations things. They can probably speak to that a little better than I.
Sure. It'll be done at both sites.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kellum Cybrand, 32319 Highway 47, Cambridge, Minnesota. The business side will be done from both the current showroom, office area, and at onsite.
So both will be staffed?
Correct.
At all time?
Both will be staffed at all times, correct. All open hours, correct.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So, just to clarify, so will you be doing point of sale at both? Like, I could rent a U-Box at the U-Box building and I could...
Sure. You can rent a U-Box, you know, from your cellphone also. So it can be done mobily.
I understand, but basically, if I walk in, I don't need to, if I, I don't have to go to the other building?
No, not at all. No.
Okay, and then...
We'll have facilities onsite to do that.
And then since you'll be staffing both buildings, they will be able to function fully independent, right? There'll be...
Correct.
Facilities for staff or customers, things like that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Will they have the same hours? The two separate kind of sites or...
The same, the same business hours for the actual showroom aspect of it are the access hours at the facility onsite, which are located in here. The seven to seven.
Okay.
Nine to five on Sunday.
Also, I was wondering, is there a special, unique vehicle that does the loading of these U-Boxes that is unique to that site only? Just a special loading vehicle?
As far as loading them?
Well, you know, taking them to a home and then from a home back to your storage facility.
Sure, we have a couple trailers onsite where a customer can take it to their own home. Otherwise, like we talked about before, a delivery vehicle will drive in to the building. We'll load that onto the vehicle. It'll go to the customers.
So it's the trailer that makes it unique? Because that U-Box, would it fit on the, you know, on the back of a pickup or anything like that?
No, it won't fit in there.
It's got to have this trailer that's...
Well, or it's loaded onsite or with the trailer or with our delivery.
All right. Thank you.
So these trailers you're talking about, are they going to be, for lack of a better term, for rent at this building? Or do you have to go to the other building to get the trailers?
We'll keep them inside the building. So there'll be one to two inside the building that we can use onsite. Otherwise, over at the other site as needed. Depends on the demand needed for the trailers. Majority of our customers are going to, they load or unload them onsite or it's delivered to their home.
So then back to the question Commissioner Geisler had earlier. Why is there no drive access between the facilities? Because once you leave this facility to get to the main building, you then have to go east on Coon Rapids Boulevard up to the light and come all the way back because of the divided roadway.
I think we had some limitations on whether or not we could put in a drive aisle between the two with the landscaping requirements on that side. Maybe you can speak to that a little more?
Yeah, I don't believe it would be impossible to. I think landscaping could be figured, if that was a priority to have an internal connection, I think there would be a way of figuring that out and still complying with the landscape requirements. So my understanding is it just was not seen as critical to have that internal connection. Not, you know, not a city requirement either to have the connection. Certainly, if it was a concern, something you could address through conditions. But that was my overall understanding, that it just wasn't, wasn't something that was needed.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
The use, I think, is, you just said, for example, that you might have some of the vehicles, like, stored at the, at both sites, right? But, I mean, the employees are having to move them, right? So I'm thinking for their safety, for their ease, right? Instead of having to come out and make a lot of trips, I guess. Having some of that drive between makes sense. But again, I also understand that it's not a requirement, but it just does seem like there should be some connection.
It would be quite, it would be quite rare.
Okay. Okay.
Is there going to be any trucks, of your rental trucks, stored on this lot?
Not at all, no.
Even though there is some stored there now?
Correct, but there will not be none.
As long as you're up there, do you want to make a further presentation from what Mr. Brown had to say or...
No, I just wanted to say thank you for working through us with this process and we appreciate all your help.
All right, we had a public hearing on this earlier that was continued. So at this time, I will reopen the public hearing for Planning Case 21-38, the site plan for the U-Haul at 35253531 Coon Rapids Boulevard and 34XX 115th Lane. Anyone present wish to speak at the public hearing? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm William Baker, 3502 115th Lane Northwest. And I also represent the Peterson Town Home Association. So that whole building, there's three units. We just want to restate that we're very much in favor of this. The way it is now is dangerous and brings people breaking into the buildings all the time. This is about the best neighborhood I could imagine having. So I just wanted to restate it as we've said in previous meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Hello again. My name is Dennis Olson. We own 3541 Coon Rapids Boulevard. It's just north of this Pedersen Floral property. We're all for this. Everybody's done a bunch of good work, getting it all tuned up. And the building, I've seen some of the plans on that. It looks really nice. It'll look good for the Boulevard. You guys have done a wonderful job on the Boulevard. So we're all for it. I think the people that are going to be happier than us are going to be the police department. So there's some issues going on there all the time. It seems like we've called in just a bunch. So, and I think this will be a good fit. I've seen some of their other facilities in different parts of town and it's not an eyesore. The buildings will be all new. I think it's a good fit. You guys have done a good job.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak, public hearing? Anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. No one on Zoom. And was there a petitioner on Zoom that, did they want to make any comments?
Mr. Sorenson knows the procedure. He has not asked to address the commission.
All right. Final call for the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So as probably obvious from my previous comments, I really am struggling why there isn't an internal connection here. You know, I don't know why we're asking people to go from one building to another via a county road. You know, if this was a smaller road, I'd maybe be comfortable with it. But it's, the Boulevard's busy. It's not easy to get to two sites because it's a write-out from the new, the site that we're looking at. To get back to the other one, if for any reasons, it's a vehicle traveling back and forth, be that a customer, be that an employee, whatever. You know, so I have, I'm just a little confused there, especially since there is the loading dock area that's right there that's already conducive to just make the connection, right? It's literally just curb cuts. I personally, I mean, again, whether it comes down to it, if we were to lose a handful of shrubs to get a bunch of cars off the Boulevard that are just making a, what, a 400-foot travel? I think that makes a lot of sense for the traffic flow for the area. And, you know, as we saw over the last couple of years, the number of U-turns that happens at the light down the way for various reasons. I think avoiding a bunch of U-turns happening on the Boulevard with potentially trucks or trailers, extended trucks, people who may or may not have experience driving those trucks that may be renting them. I think there's a lot of reason to do a little bit better connection to allow a signalized turn off a smaller road into the campus, the U-Haul campus there. That is really my only concern with where we're at. I am very happy with staff shifting this towards use flexibility and the other work that we, that the applicant has done here for the, as far as the other conversations we've had over the last couple of months. So that's really, I think, the only thing that I would like to see us talk about or address.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
I'll echo it, just saying, as much as it is just a rarity that they would expect the need, I still think it's something worth investing in to just provide that, that pass-through. I think it will be used, but, you know. I don't think that there's a, there's any debate about whether or not they're willing to do it or not, but I think it would be a good thing to add.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Chris, what did you say about signalized, something? You didn't mean within the site.
Not within the site. I meant that you would take the signal at the, the road's escaping me right now. But you'd take, you'd turn right at the signal to then enter into the site if you wanted to or turn right if you, because if you're turning left to get to the site, so if you're coming, heading east on the Boulevard, you would have to either make a U-turn at the signal to come in or you'd have to turn left and then go in. If there was a cut, you could enter in U-Haul through that side road and not be making U-turns to get to the U-Haul building. Not to be too punny about the phrasing, but...
I see what you mean.
That signalized intersection, I believe, is Pheasant Ridge.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Nablock.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Schmoki and Geisler. The only clarification I would, I would ask is of Mr. Brown. If a connecting pathway between the two buildings were changed on the plan, would that affect the shrubs and the landscaping plan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nablock. I would simply recommend, I think that adding a condition related to internal vehicular access seems reasonable. I think we could, you could structure that condition in a way that, you know, is a little more general, that the applicant work with staff to do that. I think if, you know, we are losing three or four shrubs or something like that, that is not a very significant change and that can be done without going back to planning commission.
I also feel that there needs to be the cross-connectivity between the two units or sites. My main problem I have with this case still rests with the fact, no matter whether we're trying to use flexibility or not, that we're putting warehousing on Coon Rapids Boulevard in the River Rapids overlay district. I believe we're setting a bad precedent, putting in a building that's by their own definition a warehouse use. There's no, there's no place for warehousing on Coon Rapids Boulevard. And for that reason alone, I will not be supporting the case.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
The, I'll maybe be more transparent with my comment. I believe creating an internal connection between these sites makes them feel more like a cohesive concept and that the warehousing storage becomes part of the main U-Haul facility and service, in my opinion. Even though these are two separate parcels, we are considering them separately. It does create a cohesive sense that this is a singular business operating and they just happen to have two places that you would go to. I do think that making that internal connection solves some of that concern for me. I do agree that I don't want to, I don't want to see big warehouse buildings out there. This has definitely been designed up past what the original square box boring building that we saw the first round. They've added the aesthetic designs to make this feel less like a box that's going to be filled with boxes as far as what people see. And I do think that the use flexibility purpose does solve the precedent issue, in my opinion. The whole point of use flexibility is that it's specific to the site, specific to the application, very narrow in scope. It does help us, in the long run, not see this become a pervasive issue throughout the city. So I think, I think staff has used the tools available to them to do this in the right way.
To further my comments, it's, there's no doubt it's a nice-looking building and the building could just as easily be used as a self-storage building, just like the other building is. And it would take care of the eyesore issue with the current problems we have with the Pedersen Floral. I just can't get past putting warehousing on Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bradley.
To add to Mr. Geisler's comments, and it may be my comments alone, but I adopt what he said, as well as saying the warehousing aspect of this is a label that we, you know, we put on storage. But true warehousing is more large trucks in a fairly large volume entering and leaving the premises on a regular basis. That kind of traffic has not been anticipated for this project. It's not true warehousing as I believe the plans initially conceived it. It's been proposed as a hybrid. I believe it fits the existing business. It helps take care of a blighted property. It augments the existing business and it's a general improvement, I believe, for the city and for the neighborhood. And for those reasons, I believe we should support it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Higley.
I also agree with Commissioner Casey, which you started earlier. Thank you to the applicant, to the staff for doing, doing all the work. And I, I think it's a good use of the property. I don't know what other type of property would come in there, but I think it's a good use, especially if we get them connected. And that would make it, make it a campus, make it campus-y, I guess, is what the word is. But anyway, I think it looks, the way it's being proposed and presented here now, I fully support.
Mr. Chair, I'm willing to make a motion.
Commissioner Schmoki.
In Planning Case 21-38, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions, that they're compliant with Title 11, that all engineering and sustainability comments are addressed, site security agreement is entered into with the city, hours of operation are limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Thursday and Saturday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM Friday and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Sunday. Outdoor storage will be prohibited. Vehicles must be parked in striped parking spaces as shown on the site plan and not in other paved areas or open yards. Loading and unloading of containers must occur at the loading dock shown on the site plan. And that we add a provision or a condition number eight, which is to include an internal, I'll say it this way, internal vehicular access between the two U-Haul building sites.
Second.
May I make a recommendation, Mr. Chair and Moogert? Could you add an additional condition that the use flexibility be approved by... Could you add an additional condition that the use flexibility be approved by City Council?
Yes.
As an additional condition, because we don't want a, a site plan that would be non-compliant if that use flexibility is not approved.
Certainly, so I'll amend my motion to add a condition number nine, that says the use flexibility is approved by City Council.
And then I will second that amendment. Can we vote on both together?
No.
Amendment first.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Geisler.
The motion, yes, but the use flexibility is a separate vote.
Yeah.
Got it.
I didn't wanna vote on the amendment and then the motion and then the...
Motion by Schmalki, second by Geisler, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, six to one, Chairman Schwartz opposed. And then for the flexibility?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
In Planning Case 21-38, we'll recommend, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the use flexibility for a hybrid indoor self-storage warehousing use, finding that modification is necessary to respond to site conditions, will result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities, and will further the intent of the River Rapids overlay district.
Second that.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Nablock, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, six to one, Chairman Schwartz opposed. The case is a decision by the Planning Commission and can be appealed to the City Council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Use flexibility is a recommendation to the City Council and will be heard at the February 2nd meeting. Our next case, Planning Case 22-1, a home occupation permit for massage therapy at 2607 South Heights Drive, Keisha Corcha. I hope I got that right. Mr. Brown.
All right, and Commissioners, this item, as you said, is a home occupation permit proposal for a massage therapy business. You can see there, just along South Heights Drive there. Here, here is a floor plan of, of the home, you can see that the home occupation would occur in a room that covers about 144 square feet in area, so that is less than the, well, well under the maximum that is allowed for a home occupation. Staff is recommending approval of this one, fairly straightforward with a handful of conditions, one, that hours of operation are limited to, from, to between 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The applicant's narrative is that propose wider hours, although we have, we have communicated to the applicant that the code actually limits it to 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That vehicles associated with the home occupation are parked in the driveway as opposed to on the street, compliance with Title 11. And then finally, that the applicant comply with city massage therapy licensing requirements, all massage therapy businesses, whether they occur in a home or in a commercial space, are required to be licensed and inspected by the city, and those inspections occur annually. I can answer any questions, otherwise, I believe the applicant is here and could answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, any questions for Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Mr. Brown, with respect to this, I'm looking at the floor plan here, and it looks like there's stairs down, so maybe a split entry on the front with a back door that's, that's at grade. What are our requirements for home occupation around accessibility?
Yeah, for a home occupation, that because the, the structure is ultimately a, a private residence, there aren't, it's not going to trigger ADA requirements or anything like that, as it would if a business like that was located in a commercial space.
So we wouldn't, for instance, require that they use the at-grade entrance to enter the building, or, even if it was available, if they chose to, we don't require it as, from the city side?
It, it wouldn't be required, I mean, certainly if, if that was something you were concerned about, there is probably no, no harm in adding a condition, that, that would be within your ability to do that, but no, it would not be a requirement to specify that they use a specific entrance.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Does petitioner like to make any statement? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my, my name is Keisha Corcha, I live at 2607 South Heights Drive. I would like to, my house is a Rambler, it's actually one level, and it's all on the main level, so there's no, no more than two stairs to get up into. In the back entrance, if I did have a wheelchair, is actually just one step, it's actually higher in the back, so I could have him come in the back if I needed to. So, does that answer your question?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, we need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 22-1, a home occupation permit for massage therapy at 2607 South Heights Drive. Anyone wants to speak, public hearing? Come to the microphone, please, give your name and address for the record.
Randy Spory, 1028, 10248 Quinn Street Northwest, parallel to Raven Street. My questions are related to traffic. Are our streets set for traffic? I mean, I live on a street that seems to be a street that everybody wants to use to get to someplace else, and I see a lot of traffic beyond the speed limits, I have grandchildren that live with me, and, and I can't get anybody to slow down, and now I almost know, I, my thought is, now there's more traffic. And are there any signs on this property that's supposed to be a residential property? I, I don't have the answers to those questions. It seems that I'm going to start living in a, in a residential area that's now used to run small businesses. I'm a little, I have, I'm surrounded by three daycares presently, so I may be a little jaded, because when I go out to sit on my deck, I hear children all day, most of the day. I, I'm just concerned that my neighborhood's turned into a place where businesses are now Is there a, obviously from looking at the format and listening to the person before me, it's, it's already kind of decided, but it seems like I'm no longer living in a residence, a private residence, I'm living among people now that are running businesses. That concerns me. I guess I wanna know, you know, do it, does a sign go up in the front yard that this is the correct place to park your car? You know?
There, normally with home occupations, there are no signs that are put up.
Okay.
And as far as parking, I mean, the city ordinance allows home occupation.
Okay.
So we have no control over whether there, there are or are not.
Okay.
We can just look at the application and either approve or deny.
Okay. That, that clears up a lot of what I was, you know, concerned about. I, sometimes as a resident, or wherever I am, I get the feeling sometimes that there's a, just explaining myself a little more, that things just pop up, and there was really no precedent, or maybe no requirement, and all of a sudden they're there. I wasn't so concerned about, you know, you told me that, I'm concerned now after seeing everybody today and going through this experience, that I'm not gonna be exposed to a lot of everything, or anything, or my imagination isn't going crazy, that there's going to be 50 cars, you know, in the parking lot, or in her, in the business's driveway, you know? So I, I think I just wanna get out from behind this podium, and I think you've kinda answered my questions, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Bucciconi, is there anything that you would like to add?
With respect to the parking, one of the recommended conditions of approval is that all parking occur within the driveway. Further, I'd suggest to the gentleman, that the applicant's narrative suggests the minimum appointment is 60 minutes, and that she would like to work approximately 15 to 20 hours at most per week, so you're talking, over the course of a week, 20 cars.
Does she, can I ask the last question? Am I still, should I go back up to the board?
Please.
Things that pop, things that occur to me, this ability to have this business there, that's not transferable to the next purchaser of the house, I imagine it's not.
Mr. Brown?
It's, it's not, it's not like a conditional use permit where it's recorded with the land, if, that it is tied to both the operator and the, the property, so if either of those change, a new permit would need to be issued. As I mentioned, a massage therapy business also requires a city license that is separate from the home occupation permit, that involves a background check and a, a lot of other things, and an annual inspection. I, I would also add, you know, not, not only in this case would this business be limited to one customer at a time, the city code also actually requires that home occupations that bring customers to the property are limited to only one person being there at a time, whether it's a massage therapy business, or hair salon, or anything else. Daycares are separate from that, since those state law allows for home daycares with larger number of children. And quickly on the sign issue, home occupations are allowed up to a six-square-foot sign, so two-by-three feet or thereabouts, so a ve- very small one, as other residences are as well.
Does, how can I put this? Does the person that has the, I, I guess, permit to work, does that person allowed to franchise that off to somebody else? I mean, can, if, if my name is Joe, and I'm getting the permit, can, my name is Joe, can I not live there and go someplace else and still use the permit?
Are you talking about the massage therapy license, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. If you're a licensed massage therapist within the city of Coon Rapids, you can do massage therapy within the soon, city of Coon Rapids.
Yes, okay. Yeah. Okay, I think that, you know, sometimes as a resident, I don't know how to say what I wanna get information from, but thank you, I appreciate it. I'm gonna feel a lot better, I feel a lot better knowing these things today than not asking them and getting a letter in the mail, and, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr.
Anyone else wants to speak at the public hearing? Anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Question for Mr. Brown, just really quick, so when we're reviewing an application like this, do we take into consideration existing conditional use permits, et cetera, that are in the neighborhood to, I mean, his original question had to do with traffic, right? So would we evaluate to make sure that adding this wouldn't create unnecessary traffic in the neighborhood?
You can, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schmalki, you can certainly take into account traffic, however, it, what could be a little tough to evaluate that based on other home occupations that happen to be in the neighborhood. You'd, you'd want to be pretty specific to this particular proposal, and this property, and the surrounding area's ability to handle that traffic, as, as opposed to simply looking at other home occupations in the area.
Correct, right, so I'm thinking of it, right, with, I guess, maybe, I think you're answering the question, but I think, I just wanna make sure that there is some consideration to make sure that we're just, to the person's question, we just don't randomly just go ahead and look at these individually and say, yep, go ahead, without taking into consideration other things, right, like how many might, other businesses might be in the neighborhood, right, and, and creating traffic to the applicant's, or to the person's question.
Right, cer- certainly if there were unique site conditions to this neighborhood, where, or, you know, involved driveway that could not, for whatever reason, handle vehicles, if there were conditions like that, that's certainly something you could factor in.
Mr. Chair, if I can perhaps just maybe add a couple of comments? I think the underlying assumption with a home occupation is it doesn't generate a lot of traffic. I realize in this case, the neighbor has, has referenced a number of daycares that are nearby, I think those are somewhat unique, and that's separate from this home occupation permit. So I think the underlying premise is it doesn't generate a lot of traffic, no. You know, if, for whatever reason, we had hundreds of home oc, home occupation permits coming in, I think that might generate a conversation here and at the council level about, maybe we need to reexamine our home occupation permit, but I think, generally speaking, I mean, among the findings that you have to make is that it generates minimal traffic. The applicant, I think, has demonstrate, demonstrated that they're not gonna have a lot of peop, not, not a lot of customers, so I think staff is satisfied that it's not going to generate a lot of traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Frigilious.
Mr. Chair. I'll defer to that. Mr. Brown, just to clarify too, with the case of a home occupation permit, it's tied to the property, it's tied to the owner, and it's tied to the business type too, correct? They can't pivot into a auto repair shop from a massage therapy or a hairdresser or something like that?
That is correct, if they were looking to do anything other than a massage therapy business, if it was a type of business that triggered a home occupation permit, which is one that brings customers to the house generally, yes, they would, they would need to apply for a new permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Heigl?
Yes, I have a quick question, if, say, he says there are three daycares in the proximity there, if there were two more people, or three more people decided to open a home daycare, what would happen?
I, I mean, it, it, Mr. Bucciconi.
We would consider each individually on their own merits, and take into account some of the findings we would have to make. It's kind of hard to say without knowing more about the specific daycares, the application for the daycare, and sort of that sort of thing. The finding here, one of the findings here, is that there's minimal traffic created by the use, and we are recommending that you all make that finding.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
I have a question for Mr. Brown. Very good discussion, very good observations about density in different businesses. The, the one concern that kinda sparked me is, what is the city, has the city planning department taken to consideration certain parts of the city, or certain areas, like this citizen has mentioned? What, what is the city potentially able to do if you have a certain area where you have a tremendous volume of home occupation licenses? Does that not bring up an issue of like, almost rezoning a district or an area? Perhaps a restriction on the amount of home use licenses? That is the question I have, I don't expect an immediate answer, but, almost rhetorical in a way.
Yeah, Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Nablock. I mean, there's, there's, there's been no discussion about a change in policy with regard to, to home occupations. Actually, we've had internal conversations about, should this become more of an administrative process, rather than something that we would bring before the commission? That's kind of a separate conversation, but, you know, I, as I think we've explained, I mean, there are a number of findings that we have to make. In theory, presumably, you know, we could have 10 people on a In theory, presumably, you know, we could have 10 people on a block that have home occupations. There's nothing in our code that would prohibit that. There are findings that we have to make, and I suppose if, if it ever rose to the level where it became an issue, we'd have to reconsider the policy. But I think our history has been, and I will say this, there, a lot of communities don't do this. So, um, this is kind of a unique mechanism because we recognize that there are certain characteristics of home occupations, that's why we have that permit processed. Um, and I think we're satisfied in this instance that this applicant meets all of the, all of the requirements for a home occupation permit.
Thank you, Mr. Freelys. Anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I'll make a motion. In planning case 22 dash 1, I move that the commission approve the home occupation permit with the following conditions. Hours of operation are limited to between 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. All vehicles associated with the residence and home occupation are parked in the driveway. Number three is compliance with Title 11, City Code of Coon Rapids. And number four, the applicant must comply with applicable city massage therapy licensing requirements, including annual inspections.
Second. Motion by Casey, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Good luck. All right, our next case, another home occupation. Planning case 22 dash 2, home occupation permit for massage therapy at 10148 Raven Street. Angela Copeland, Mr. Brown.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. This, uh, request similar to the last one, uh, a home occupation massage therapy business. This one on Raven Street near Mississippi Boulevard. Uh, floor plan, this is more of a split entry house. Uh, as with the last application, the massage therapy business would be operated in a single room, this time about 132 square feet, so a relatively small, uh, percentage of the overall house. Um, it is also one that would bring one customer to the business at a time. That customer would, uh, would park in the driveway. So staff is recommending approval with, uh, actually the same conditions as the last application, that hours are limited between 8:00 a.m., 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., that the vehicles associated, uh, with the business are parked in the driveway, compliance with Title 11, and compliance with massage therapy licenses, uh, licensing requirements, including annual inspections. So I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Brown? And petitioners like to make any kind of a presentation? Please give your name and address for the record.
Angela Copeland, 10148 Raven Street Northwest. Um, I've been looking forward to doing this for a very long time. I appreciate the opportunity.
All right, thank you. All right, we need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 22 dash 2, a home occupation permit for massage therapy at 10148 Raven Street, Angela Copeland. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? And anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Thank you. And we will close the public hearing, limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I make a motion to that we approve the home op, in planning case 22 dash 2, that we approve the home occupation permit with the listed conditions in our packet.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Good luck. And our next case, planning case 22 dash 3, rezoning 3745 Main Street Vista Outdoor. Mr. Brown.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, once again. Uh, so this item is a rezoning of a fairly large piece of land, uh, about 28 acres of a, an even larger parcel that Vista Outdoor, uh, otherwise known as Federal Cartridge, owns uh, along the northwest edge of Coon Rapids. So, as you likely know, uh, Vista Outdoor operates a very large manufacturing facility that's primarily located in the city of Anoka, includes several large buildings. A portion of that broader campus is located within the city of Coon Rapids, uh, just to the west of Round Lake Boulevard, south of Highway 10, currently houses several very small storage buildings. There aren't any large buildings currently on the site. Um, the piece that Vista owns is about 75 acres, they're looking to rezone about a third of it, about 28 acres, uh, at the southwest, uh, portion of the site to accommodate a warehouse, uh, building. Uh, if this rezoning is approved, you can, uh, likely expect to see a site plan for that warehouse building at your February meeting. Uh, so a little bit of context here, uh, you can see the site, uh, on the zoning map that's on your screen, uh, has industrial-based zoning. It also has in that dashed line area what is known as the North Star Business Park Overlay District. So, uh, back in about 2008 and 2009, uh, the comprehensive plan that the city adopted at that time, uh, which has since been updated, uh, suggested that, you know, while it's okay for Vista or Federal to continue its operations, um, at this location, the city also wanted to work with them to just plan for the longer-term future. Obviously, in that broader part of the city, there are very intense retail uses with the Riverdale Village and Riverdale Commons Shopping Center is right, uh, next door. Uh, so the general sentiment was that, you know, lower-intensity industrial uses maybe weren't, uh, going to be the, 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 the long-term future of that site. So, the overlay district was established back in about 2009, uh, to really allow for Vista's operations to continue, uh, but also if they were to go away or sell off part of their site, uh, that we had a plan for some other, transition to other uses there, including office, commercial, hotel, R and D-type uses. Uh, so that was put into effect back in about 2009. Uh, the feature land use map in the comprehensive plan also continues to guide that area industrial, reflecting the existing use. However, there is some text in, uh, in the land use chapter of the plan that kind of covers what I, what I just said, and that is, well, industrial use is okay there, um, for the time being, and, you know, we want to see Vista continue its operations. If they were to vacate some or all of the site, we want it to transition to some other uses. Uh, so as I said, Vista is looking to rezone, uh, this 28 or so acre piece of land to accommodate, uh, a warehouse. They're looking at about 101,000-square-foot initial building that could be potentially expanded by about another 100,000 square feet in the future. So you can see that there currently, uh, in that aerial photo, you can see the storage buildings as well as some semi-trailers that have been parked on the site in recent years. We have worked with them. You, you know, while staff, uh, is recommending in favor of the, this rezoning, we did want to still make sure that it's possible to realize that eventual vision for the overall site. So we asked that Vista come up with a conceptual master plan that's shown here, that outlines how that, uh, warehouse parcel could kind of coexist with some of those other uses very long-term. So they're showing long-term some commercial or retail uses generally along Round Lake Boulevard. Farther into the site, um, you know, we might see long-term some office, hotel, or R and D uses. Uh, this parcel would be accessed from the existing traffic signal at Riverdale Bul, Bul, Boulevard. Uh, it would not directly front Round Lake Boulevard. It would front Main Street, although there's a bit of an elevation change there. So just a reminder, the required findings for rezonings, uh, there, there are three of them here. You would not necessarily need to make all three, but we have outlined, uh, some, uh, some, I, I guess, uh, parameters around, uh, support for all three of those in the staff report. One, the effect on public health and safety and convenience, general welfare in the area. Overall, in this case, there are heavier industrial uses, including manufacturing in the city of Anoka to the west. Obviously, some fairly intense retail uses in Coon Rapids in the area, so by adding to the straight industrial zoning, we don't feel that that is going to contribute to any public health or safety issues. Effect on present and potential surrounding land uses. Um, I, I mentioned that we are still planning for transition of much of this land to other uses in the long-term. Uh, in terms of current uses, the balance of the site is currently, uh, largely vacant or very underutilized. Nearby, we have, uh, commercial uses which can, uh, in our opinion, coexist with, with the uses that are allowed in the industrial zoning district. And then finally, conformance with the comprehensive land use plan, uh, in any applicable development district. And here, uh, we're just outlining, and this is outlined in the staff report as well, some of the comprehensive plan policies that could generally be used to support this rezoning. So at the top there, that first bullet point, uh, just reiterating that language that, uh, supplements the land use designation for that site, basically allowing Vista to continue its operations, uh, but plan for longer-term redevelopment. Uh, some other policies that apply to this, providing a supply of commercial and industrial land in those, uh, existing employment centers, the Federal Cartridge or Vista Outdoor site is specifically called out in that. Land use policy 2 dash 5 encouraging high-intensity use of remaining industrial land. Obviously, in Coon Rapids, we've seen a lot of our remaining industrial land develop in recent years, so we don't have a lot less. So, uh, allowing development of, of that is generally in supportive, uh, of, of this policy. Policy 2 dash 7, performance standards, you know, obviously, any site plan that comes in for an industrial building would need to comply with our current site plan standards, landscape standards, building design standards, uh, so that, you know, generally would, would meet that, uh, requirement of, of enforcing those performance standards. And then finally, uh, economic development policy 1 dash 1, promoting the retention and expansion of existing businesses, uh, within our targeted industry categories, of which manufacturing is one. So, in general, we like to support those existing businesses when they're expanding in place so that they don't need to look to a different community to, uh, expand. And so, since Federal owns this land, uh, we think it is a logical use for them to continue to expand their operations while, again, uh, allowing for realization of, uh, longer-term redevelopment of the site. So I can answer any questions on this. Uh, we have some representatives of the applicant here as well. Uh, so, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Brown?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Brasso.
Chair, Mr. Chair, excuse me. Uh, one bookkeeping item, uh, the agenda materials that were furnished to us, uh, recite the 60-day rule, um, showing application on December 13th, and to comply with statute, the city must approve or deny by February 11th, 2022. I assume that the city has extended the date.
That is correct. The city has extended the review period by a, uh, an, an additional 60 days, uh, because this application would need to be considered at two city council meetings, the second of which would be on February 15th.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler.
Uh, Mr. Brown, just two points of clarification. So as far as what we're considering today, we are removing a portion of this overlay district, not the entirety of it, correct?
That is correct. So, uh, as I said, this application applies to about 28 acres of the 75 or so acre site. So the remainder of the site would still remain in the overlay district, and the overlay district is not, uh, changing at, at this point.
Excellent. And then the second clarification I wanted to make, as far as the conceptual master plan that the city was looking for, no one's beholden to that. That is an idea, there is nothing committed to it, it is just a high level. Theoretically, this could fit in here, this could work here and meet what is the remaining of the guiding overlay district and zoning.
That's, that's correct. We really requested that because obviously the, uh, most significant finding, uh, to be made in a rezoning application is compliance with the comprehensive plan, and we wanted to just be sure that by taking this, uh, large area out of the overlay district, that we are still able to realize that longer-term vision and transition to other uses on parts of the site, which is called out for in the comp plan.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Petitioners like to make any kind of a presentation? Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name's Eric Carlson, uh, 20464 Carey Street, Oak Grove, Minnesota. Uh, my job there at Federal Cartridge is I'm the senior director of operations. You know, we've been at this facility for over 100 years. In fact, this June, we're going to be celebrating our, our anniversary of 100 years. We have about 1,400 employees that, that work in the operations group, and, you know, today, we have raw material at almost any location. You see the semis as you drive by, we have some way, some down on Highway 10. And in the world, we try to compete, even within our ammo group or even within the world, you know, we have to be, um, getting efficient, becoming, um, quicker, better, faster. And what we're asking is to put a warehouse, a raw material warehouse on our site, which allows us access to it, um, so we can continue to hopefully be another 100 years manufacturing in our backyard.
Thank you.
Two questions for you. One, what's going to happen to the existing powder houses? Are you going to re, relocate those elsewhere, or?
Um, Doug Larson, 2758 Creston Boulevard, Northeast Hamlet. Um, I'm the facilities manager at Federal, and the site is, yes, we will remove some of these and relocate them on the property on the Anoka side from there, which we are currently pending this, working with the city of Anoka to get that in plan in place. So, um, the plan calls for the removal of, I think, four of these powder huts to remove them, we'll relocate them elsewhere into one, one hut. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Uh, I forgot it. I might remember later. All right, we need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in planning case 22 dash 3, rezoning at 3745 Main Street Vista Outdoor. Anyone present wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to the public hearing? And Zoom?
Nobody from the public on Zoom, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tuggle from Vista and the Opus Group was there, did not indicate he wished to speak.
All right, thank you. At this time, then I will close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission. Commissioner Geisler.
I think that they have provided a very solid plan here that's, the, been thoughtfully considered. Uh, I attended the previous presentation they made with the city council as well during one of their work sessions where they went into further detail. Anything that's going to help our businesses be successful in the current climate, I think, is a thoughtful use, especially when it fits in with everything we're all, we're doing here. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm in favor of adjusting this overlay district and looking forward to seeing more from this.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I agree with Commissioner Geisler, although I just want to say, uh, the plan looks good and welcome to Coon Rapids, so.
Well, they're, they're already here.
Yeah, I know. Welcome, welcome back again. Yeah, I know. Welcome, welcome back again.
The expansion.
Yes.
I doubt that this will increase the availability of your ammunition, but I, I hope that it did. All right, Commissioner, any one ready for a motion?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
In planning, I'll make a motion. In planning case 22-3, I, we, the commission recommends approval of the proposed rezoning based on the following. One, the proposed rezoning is compatible with the adjacent land uses and zoning. Number two, the proposed rezoning would not have an adverse effect, impact on the surrounding area. And number three, finally, the proposed rezoning is consistent with future land use guidance and policies of the 24 comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion by Knoblock, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and will be introduced by the city council at their February 2nd meeting. Good luck.
February 2nd?
February 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
All right, on to other business. Mr. Brown, you have anything for other business?
Couple updates. We have a couple of site plans in for consideration at your February meeting. One, for Vista Outdoor's warehouse on the site you just discussed. We have a second site plan for an industrial building on East River Road, just south of John Roberts Company, Skanel Properties. National developer is proposing a multi-tenant building there. There's about eight acres that John Roberts currently owns and does not need, so they are in the process of selling that for development. So you'll see that site plan as well. I don't have a lot else in the way of updates on other projects right now.
I recall there was a comment, it was either a month or two ago, that you had something coming for 3050 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Is that kind of slid off or?
We don't have any applications in right now, and I am not aware of anything that is coming in for additional conditional use permits there. As you are aware, the commission has approved a handful of conditional use permits for various uses in that multi-tenant building. And we have continued to work with the applicant on implementing some of the conditions, like removing the fence that is there, improving some of the landscaping and things like that. So that is still on our radar, but we don't currently have any applications in. I'm not aware of anything that's coming in in the very near future.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I just want to say, welcome to Mr. Brown. The first meeting, you've done, you've held yourself very well against us, the motley crew of planning, so, Commissioner. So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Brown or Mr. Freely has any update on replacement? Not that we could replace.
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner. Yes, so we, we have, the position is advertised, I think, as of a couple of days ago. We had around 10 applicants, if I recall correctly. So we're starting the screening process to identify, you know, how many of those candidates we would like to interview. And then I think the schedule is, what, first week of February, Matt? We were going to possibly consider doing interviews with, with those candidates who have applied. So, yeah, we are, process is moving ahead and we're excited to, to see who, who has applied.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown, I wasn't in any way reflect on not wanting you to continue doing what you're doing.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Brown, we see our annual review packet as well next month as far as all of our annual business that we have to clear, that we do.
Yes, that's, that's right. That is part of the plan for the February meeting. There are some kind of ongoing, our routine business items you'll need to handle that. So yes, that is on our radar.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Heickel, second by Knoblock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please adjourn.